Meeting of the Village of Ortonville Council is November 28, 2016, 7:00 PM. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, please. Tanya?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads, please. God, we thank, we give you thanks for family time experienced over the recent Thanksgiving holiday and for your safety provided during all of our travels. We are so thankful for your blessings provided during council's deliberations over the past 12 months. Much has been done, yet there's so much more to do. We're so very thankful for the past faithful service of our departing council members, Debbie and Courtney. Now, according to the will of our voters, we welcome our newest council members, Mark and Karen. And as we move forward on behalf of the Ortonville community, may council proceed with a bold yet unified spirit of cooperation and respect for one another. And when our interests differ, as they sometimes will, help us to always demonstrate equal measures of charity and understanding for the opinions of others. We humbly ask these things in your almighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Courtney?
Ashman?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Sliva?
Yes.
Dialis?
Present.
Skornika?
Here.
Butsu?
Here.
Wills?
Here.
Have an agenda that's before us. Do you have any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented? If there is none, please signify by...
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Skornika, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Agenda is approved. Next on our agenda, we have approval of council meeting minutes from October 24 of 2016.
I make a motion to approve the council minutes of October 24, 2016, as presented. Support.
Motion by Councilman Skornika, supported by Councilman Bryce, to approve the minutes of the October 24, 2016 meeting as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Minutes are accepted. Acceptance items under item six. No questions, then we'll move on. Any questions at all? As you reported, the Parks and Recs report. Why don't you wait a couple of minutes and we'll pick you up under the public comments. Okay?
It's on my short.
Okay, well, this, we'll do it then. Item seven is dispersments.
I have a question about dispersments.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I thought everything looked very good. The only thing that I am concerned about is in the last month's village council minutes, there wasn't a total for the amount of dispersments listed. And so I'm seeing a total on the dispersment report for $19,723.91. And I was wondering if we were going to put that total amount on the, you know, on next month's village council report.
They typically always are.
Well, I didn't see it on this last one, so...
You're talking on the meeting minutes, on the meeting minute, uh...
The name right here, where it says a total of in our minutes?
Are you talking about the minutes, Karen?
Pardon me?
The minutes themselves?
Yeah, I didn't see it in the minutes.
Um, page two, the under dispersments.
Okay, okay. Um, I was wondering if we could put it, like, right after, when it says dispersments, we could get, put the total there. So it's just a suggestion.
Oh, after the title dispersments?
Yeah.
I think it's gotta be in the motion.
Does it have to? Okay.
Because that's what, that's the motion that's made to say the amount.
Okay, it's just difficult to find those dispersment numbers, that's all.
I hadn't realized that before, but it...
But it's included in the motion, under dispersments, it's just, I mean, do you wanna...
Okay, no, no, no.
It is a little difficult to find, so, just a suggestion.
But it is right below that.
Under dispersments.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
I have a question on 39 and 40, the two water tests for the Old Town Hall and the office. Oh, never mind, I just, never mind, one's bacterial and one's chemical.
Just a point of clarification on number 28. We asked for and did receive a somewhat of a breakdown in our legal fees between the medical marijuana issue and the other legal action that's in process. And I thought that we were going to be always discussing the, that item that's in legal issue by street address and not by the owner's name. So under dispersment, under that dispersment, we need to make sure that we do that from here on out. Which technically reads as 144 South Street. Okay? Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve our dispersments dated for today's meeting, November 28, totaling $19,723.91. Support?
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Dialis, to pay our bills in the amount of $19,723.91. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Courtney?
Bryce?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Butsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes. Motion is carried to pay our bills in the amount of $19,723.91. Item eight under our agenda is items from trustees. Let's start down on my right.
Um, no news, no, no, no news on the streets.
Okay.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
Colleen? The Personnel Committee, along with the village manager, is in the process of completing evaluations for a clerk position, to fill that position. And it's my understanding that there are two applicants that are going to be interviewed as soon as possible, just to get that finalized. And then that'll come back to council for council's final approval. Moving on then, item nine, public comments. Fred, if you'd like to state your name and...
Fred Waybrant, Director of Parks and Recreation for the Charter Township of Brandon. On my rec report, and I'm sorry I interrupted, because with the township, when a rec report comes up, I can add or discuss it with the, with the board at that time. But on the rec report, I'm not sure, because I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but is that the one where I'm listing the usage of Sherman Village Park, or is that just my rec report? Does it list the usage of Sherman Park?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, with that said, is this something that's gotta be approved by the council, or is it just a, you know, for the, for the, for Mark and Karen, we use a village park for our baseball softball program, basketball courts, concession stands, tournaments, you know, odds and ends, things. I really liked Sherman Park. It's very, very nice, the village keeps it up real well, and the parents of the community appreciate it as well. So is this, Wayne, something I gotta get approved, is it just accept, the acceptance that you just did is to go ahead?
Yeah, I'd say that's, that's fine. Council, you see any problem with that, to the contrary?
Nope. But he is talking about adding more programs, though, right? What this memo states about the, the senior softball program?
Yeah, if we can't, I might talk to Nat about that, like a Sunday program, to get fifty, it's a 50 and over, basically.
But the, the usage of the fields is not actually affected, though, is that correct?
No.
And there's still gonna be lights on at night in the summertime until 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock's curfew, yes, sir.
Yeah, so...
Sometimes they're 10:15, because people dogged getting out of there, but nothing's really changed, trying to bring some senior activities on site. One thing that will, I'll bring to your attention is, I'm not sure who the village resident is behind the senior center, but believe it or not, there's balls that go into his yard, and it was hitting his camper at one time, he moved it, and him and I discussed, I can't think of his name, but to put a fencing up, like a netting, to keep the balls in, on the property. So I don't know if that's, who owns that land, is that township, that's village, the senior center property? Is that, does that gotta be okay?
It's a good question, I'm not 100% sure. I know that the building maintenance and anything having to do with the building is handled by the township. The property on which the, you're talking about the ball field?
Yeah.
To the north of the actual building?
Yeah.
Is...
But the ball field's the village, I would think.
Then it would fall in the, under the village jurisdiction.
All right, so I'll bring, I got a sketch and what I plan on doing here, and I'll bring that to you.
I just think for future reference, and correct me if I'm wrong, other council members, but I think it'd just be a, a good public relations move to keep us informed.
Yeah, you'll be seeing a rec report.
Any possible changes in usage?
Yep, anytime that...
Usages especially.
Yep, anytime I'm gonna do anything in the village, I'd be sure to get your acceptance on that.
So, sorry, one other question in that regard. So, it's been some years since my sons or boys played ball on that field, but if I remember correctly, they were only about four or five years old when they were playing there. What are the age groups that are playing in that park now, to where they can hit it over the fence?
That's machine, we do a machine pitch over there, because we get so abundant, yeah, we actually had an electrician put underground wiring to the pitcher's mound, and it's hooked up to the senior center as far as power. There's years that we have over the abundance of teams for the machine pitch, and because we don't have baseball fields at the township park, these things are going all the time. So we had to add a pitching machine, and sometimes, we try to keep the boys off that side, but sometimes a girl will get a hold of one. And then when we ring in that softball, or the baseball tournaments for U8 boys, it's on Memorial Day weekend, it's a travel program, they can hit them out pretty good, so that was the main reason, right there, those kids, they do a home run derby, and we put up fencing at the time, it helped, and we did it in the parking lot of the DPW as well, that tee ball field there as well. So the tee ball, basically, is three to five-year-olds, is what we've been, we have a beginning baseball that, we, we have the three-year-olds. But we had to add the pitch machine, and next thing we know, they're going over the fence.
Have you given any thought to having a removable, or a, like they do in the football end zones?
They, the netting goes up...
A net that goes up and down?
Actually, they...
Should be less expensive than having a 10-foot fence, I would think.
Yep, they actually designed, what I plan on doing, which I'll get for your approval, is their flag posts every 12 foot or something, and they have the pulley, and so you just pull it in up and put her down. It's a stationary thing. I've talked to Bob from the DPW about it as well, that's about as far as I got with it. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, the DNR passport grant, we scored 245 points. I have not heard if we are gonna receive that grant or not, but 245 points is actually pretty good points. So we'll, it should be any time I hear something on that. For you guys that know, not sure about the passport grant, that's your money that you pay the state park to get your yearly pass on your license plate. We applied for a $25,000 grant, matching with the village and the township partnering up with the match, and it's to rebuild the concession stand. It's in very, very need. And the only way you qualify, if your park is 50 years old or older. So the village qualified pretty good on that, so we'll see how that comes out.
So that's how many points, you said?
We had 245 points, and I think, we're over 50%, so that's good.
What, how does a, a point equate to a dollar of grant receipt?
Well, it's just, the points are like, what's environmental about the place, you know? We said, well, Kersley Creek is right down the, across the street, basically. What's the, what's the need, you know? Well, the need is, we run three-year-olds through, 12-year-olds down at the park, we, we give the numbers of the ball players, with 600, 600 kids are playing at Sherman Park, those kind of things, and, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but what's, what's the citizens' income in the area, things like that? So it's all about, you get somebody points for, for the need, and those kind of things. I mean, they ask about, what's the landscape around here, or is it environmental safe? Was there ever gas stations there? And no, there wasn't no gas station, so we get points for that. We got points for never applying for one, so there's, those kind of things.
So again, does that qualify, or does that equate to a point?
Not to dollars.
To a dollar?
Nope. You, we could have 245 is what we got, and somebody could have 290, and we'll both get the same amount of money. Depends on what they apply for.
Maximum amount of the grant is capped at 25,000 per any recipient?
No, it's capped at 40, but we went for 25, because that's all we needed.
Okay.
So somebody could get, you know, a lot more points, and we still get the same amount of money. Depends on what they applied for.
Yeah.
Okay?
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Item 10 on our agenda, revisiting the SMART municipal credit and community credit contract, which was tabled from the October 24 meeting. There was a question as to how that can be, that grant could be perhaps controlled from our end, and this motion suggests that that is one way of doing it. Think there was some concern that we wanted that, those funds to perhaps go to actual senior citizen transportation and not to children's ski club transportation, for example. And this is once, is this a recommendation you've come up with, Dave?
Yes, Mr. President, based on the discussion that the council had last month, I touched base with Brandon Township, and they supplied one of their quarterly reports that show that there's quite a bit of money that is expensed toward the senior center and for transportation. It's the pleasure of this council, they want to dictate where that $1,406 goes, whether it's directly to the senior center for transportation, or if you want to divide it up, or give it completely to the recreation department, which has been the practice in the past. Based on conversation I had with one of the council members who was proposing that maybe we should investigate the senior center, this is a, splitting the difference, so to speak, and do a 50-50.
And the money that would be so-called lost to the rec department, the 50% that is in front of us at the moment, I think you indicated in the conversation that there's enough money the township's coffered to easily cover that?
That's right. It would just be a bookkeeping entry on their end to make sure that the recreation department is adequately funded.
So you have a suggested motion in front of you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the 2016-17 SMART credit, $1,406, to the Brandon Township, with 50% allocated to the recreation department and 50% allocated to the senior center transportation.
So we have a motion by Councilman Bryce and supported by Councilman Ashman. Is there any discussion on the motion as presented? Since this is more of an allocation and not a total amount that we're expending, we'll just go with a standard vote. So all those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Item number 11 on our agenda is new business. David, would you explain this a little bit? I think it's just a housekeeping issue, as I understand it, is that correct?
You summed it up perfectly well, Mr. President. It's with the transition of village managers this year, Act 51 requires us to designate an administrator for streets, and this is the basic resolution that's put together by the state, and we just fill in the blanks.
And you have the recommended motion before you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution designating David Trent, village manager, as administrator designated by the village of Ortonville, who shall represent the municipality in transactions with the state transportation department pursuant to section 13-9 of Act 51, Public Acts 19, Public Acts of 1951.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Skornika, supported by Councilman Ashman, to approve David Trent as the administrator. Respect to streets. Motion as read. I will not read it again because it's too lengthy. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask, does this form here need to be filled out, then? I mean, we have the form through that, is that the same?
Yeah, we'll, we'll fill in the blanks accordingly.
That's just your copy. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Welcome, David, you are now the new street administrator.
Love the responsibility.
And our new business, under item 11B, we have a resolution regarding medical marijuana Would you elaborate a little bit, please, David?
Certainly. Last month, the council was given an opinion letter by legal counsel that summarized the revised law that the state legislature passed regarding medical marijuana facilities and dispensaries, and it's the recommendation of legal counsel, and I support his recommendation that council take a formal act regarding the resolution. Before you tonight, there's nothing in the state law that requires any municipality to take action if there is no ordinance that has been approved that authorizes the establishment of medical marijuana facilities and dispensaries within a municipality. However, legal counsel does recommend that we take a stance, one way or the other, and in this case, the recommendation is to indicate that we will not allow or prohibit those to exist within the boundaries of the village. One of the items that came up during your discussion last month, that was injected by interim manager John Lyons, was that there's very little space within the community where one of these could be located, and we've provided a colored map that shows how much of the village would not be allowed to have one located within those parameters. So you can see, it's pretty much just some of the residential areas within the village that would even be allowed to have something of that nature set up.
This was just based on distance from schools and churches?
Distance from the schools, churches, and other regulated uses, such as the village pub.
So looking at this map here, I could have neighbors to have a dispensary?
But you cannot, because it's residential.
It's not colored here.
But you cannot, it's not a licensed resident, or licensed facility. You can be a caregiver, but not a licensed facility in a residential area, according to the state law.
If that's the case, then I don't understand why some of these other areas haven't been designated.
Because this is just purely based off of schools, churches, and bars, things like that.
And then, when you look in narrow down, I, that may be residential, because that's a duplex, or no, that's across the street. There's only, I believe, Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, John said there's like five properties in the whole village that could even be a possibility.
Well, from the, from this schematic here, it looks like there's more than that.
It does.
But they're, they're gonna be primarily located in the vicinity of Naron and M15, and up through half of the pet supply, old pet supply building, and then probably Jet's Pizza Building, and that would be about it. Those would be the M1s and the RM.
What about the B2 in the lower left corner by Granger?
So as John Lyons has indicated, there, there's only a handful of possible locales that such an operation could be established.
But this motion as presented would... But this motion as presented would not authorize any facility to operate. Period.
And what we were given was a recommendation of somebody who reached out to all the municipalities, that you have an option to do something. If you do not, you may choose to do what you're already doing, or may choose to do a combination of the above. So it was not recommended to us, it was offered to us by somebody who would love to draw this up for us, and I'm concerned about that being an opportunity for them to reach out to the communities, to feel like we should do it because we're not educated as to what it all entails, and jumping to the gun and doing something permanent, I think, before we know.
To me, what's confusing to me is the motion suggests that we're not to authorize any licensed medical marijuana facility to operate within the boundaries of the village of Ortonville. That's very clear, but the map itself shows that there's possibilities that there could be.
Right. We've resolved to say that we do not want to allow that.
Yeah, this is, our council would make a decision that we don't want any, period, regardless of what the allowance would offer. Looks like we might have half a dozen, like as John Lyons mentioned, but... I move to approve the resolution not to authorize any licensed medical marijuana facilities to operate within the boundaries of the village of Ortonville.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Wills, supported by Councilman Scornica. Any further questions, discussion?
Did anybody get a chance to read in the review this week for the medical marijuana information based on the state laws and everything? Very good information.
I did not. And that's not to say that a council in the future could change their mind and do something to the contrary.
Right.
So, for right now, that's my, I stand on my motion, and it's been supported. Any further discussion, questions? Since this is a resolution, we are required by our charter to have a roll call vote. Thank you, Courtney.
Sliva?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Butsu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
Bryce?
No.
Wills?
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carried, 6-1.
I make a motion to approve the allocation of $1,500 to the Brandon Groveland Youth Assistance from line item 101.299.885.000.
Motion by Councilman Dialis, supported by Councilman Scornica, to approve the allocation of $1,500 to the Brandon Groveland Youth Assistance from line item 101.299.885.000. Discussion? I have a question. What is that line item?
That is a...
Amy Albeth?
That's the name of Brandon Groveland Youth Assistance.
It is, okay, thank you.
The only question I have, I guess, is if we have it budgeted, and it's below a certain dollar amount, why do we have to approve it for as a council?
Good question.
Because we don't have a policy for those items yet. We're working on that, below that line item number amount.
It's an expenditure that has to be approved by council.
But it is a line item on our general budget, so...
Do you approve it for the monthly disbursements?
Yeah, I think that once we approve our impending, impending disbursement rules and regs, I think that that'll be, become eventually a moot point, then.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Dialis?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Butsu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes. Motion is carried. Item D, under new business, we have a parade permit presented by the Brandon Township Parks and Recs Department for Christmas in the village. I have a question, Fred. Looks like to me, when the diagram was filled out on the backside, the diagram is incorrect. It looks like the diagram has the parade going down Cedar Street.
No.
That's in yellow, and red is where it typically goes down Church Street.
It's the same route as always. I didn't, I'm sorry, but I did do that, but I checked it.
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah, it's the same route as always, for those that know it.
I would like to make a motion to approve the permit for the Christmas parade sponsored by the Brandon Township Parks and Rec Department for December 3, 2016.
We have a motion by Councilman Bryce, supported by Councilman Dialis, to approve the request for a parade permit from the Brandon Township Parks and Recs Department for the parade to be held this coming Saturday, December 3, 2016, beginning at 3:00 p.m. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 12 on our agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. So this could be anything, anything from soup to nuts. If you want to address the council, step up to the microphone, state your name.
Hello, my name is Karen North. My family has a farm over on Homer Lake Road, so I hope I'm at the right place. I was just sent here by your local town police because I've had some incidences involving my neighbors on the backside of our farm, where they are shooting at us, and I've had this addressed over the year with the police department, and they told me to come here and ask you what's going on with that, and what your plans are, and if there's any ordinances for rifle laws in place, which I'm really kind of upset about, because my whole life I've been friendly with all my neighbors, and my family's known everyone around us my entire life. I moved away and came back, and things are a little different, and I'm a huge Second Amendment supporter, I really am, but when I, you know, I'm shot at by my neighbors, I'm a little bit scared for my life. And I've addressed it with my neighbor, and he does not seem to be afraid of the cops, or doesn't seem to care that, you know, he doesn't seem to know how to safely handle his rifle, which is kind of unfortunate for me. So I was just kind of coming here to see what I could help you do, or how I could be involved.
What is your address, again?
It's 4641 Homer Lake Road.
Are you outside of the village limits?
Yeah, am I in the wrong place?
You are.
Oh, come on. I know I didn't recognize your names.
This is the right room, but the wrong board and the wrong day.
I've been moved away for a while. It's next Monday.
Next Monday is the township meeting.
Good practice.
See, now, good practice.
Shoot, I've only been in front of a few boards.
Next Monday, this room, 7:00 p.m.
Okay.
Right here.
All right.
Will be there.
I didn't think I recognized your name, but I know I voted, so, you know.
Good question, though.
All right, well, I'm sorry. I mean, I don't...
No need to apologize.
Okay, is that going on? I mean, I know I saw in the paper that Atlas, the township supervisor there, got shot at recently, you know, and...
Straight bullet, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's pretty much what it was, but, you know, it's still the safety of my family and all those involved, and, I mean, we have a farm, so I should have the right to go on it. But, you know, I know that's probably an issue that you're dealing with in the township, too, so...
Yeah, just an FYI, if you happen to move into the village, no firearms are allowed at all in the village.
Oh, okay, so I couldn't even, like, open carry?
Bow, and you can bow hunt, though.
All right. Well, I mean, it's getting kind of rural around here, so, I mean, you know, but, all right, well, it was a pleasure to meet you guys.
It's very nice to meet you.
If I see you around, at least I'll know who you are.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Fred Wabrant. I don't know, it's about two or three village council meetings ago, we talked about the permit, not necessarily the parade, but just that permit in general, and I was wondering if the council has an objective, if I take a look at that thing and renovate it a little bit, because it...
The actual permit form?
Yeah.
Seems like there was some discussion by one or two of the council members, they wanted to update that.
Yeah, I have some ideas, if it's okay if I bring it to the council.
I think at that time, it might have been a copy of a copy, and the clarity was very poor on the application, and I think that's what we were discussing, is, no, it was something more than that?
Yeah, some other information as well.
And the relevant information.
Okay.
And for specific events that the Parks and Rec Department holds, the parade permit is not complete enough for their needs.
Yeah, it's not Parks and Rec friendly, but we know, as the council and as the township, what goes on in this town, you can actually list some of the things, some of the items, like circle it, but I got some ideas, if it's okay if I go ahead and bring that maybe to your January meeting or something.
Sure, by all means.
If you want to, just send it to David, and he can send it out to everybody, and get a chance to look at it, it'd be great.
That'd be a good idea, I'll just go through the village manager. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Yeah, particularly with respect to street closures, we could add another question, like question number 9A or 11, that deals specifically with street closures, because that's always a contentious issue with some business owners, as to the specific amount of time, and when the closure would start, when it would stop, if it's more than one That would give you a little bit more room to elaborate.
Another thing, it just reminded me of, it's not on the agenda, but I will get with the village manager, then we could actually, before that gets approved, you know, the board take a look at it. The other item was the skate park, this, I know I asked for approval, but we were, we talked a few meetings ago, that we might be able to get a committee together of the council, or some village residents, and discuss my approach to programs down there, and see if that's going to work for everybody, if that's still...
Well, we have had a liaison from two Parks and Recs committee of some kind in the past.
In the past, and that kind of went wayside a little bit. I know what your application, but you got to remember, that application's gone because the program never went, and that was ran through the village. Now, I'm proposing a program to be run through the Parks and Rec Department, it's a punch part idea, all that kind of stuff, so is the council still interested in sitting down with me with some of the members that go through that, or am I just going to bring it to you, and you guys give the okay, or not?
Well, we have, we have a standing subcommittee that is Councilman Bryce.
And I would be happy to be there.
Okay, all right, then I'll get with you.
If anybody else would like to, yes, but I would be happy to be there if I'm available.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks again. Seeing no one else, we'll move on, then, to item 13 on our agenda, items from the David?
Thank you. I wanted to just update the council on some of the major initiatives that I've been undertaking since coming on last month. I've provided a summary of some of the projects that the council approved in the past, to give you an update on the scanning of our building department prints is supposed to be completed this week, and they'll be providing training to our staff on the digital files that are being compiled from that. Next week, we'll be reviewing the signed ordinance with the planning commission, and had a discussion last week with EnviroAssist. They have not commenced any work on the project that this council approved back in September. Part of the reason for that is that they were waiting for the scanning project of the building department files to be completed, and then also, I came to realize in my discussion with them, that they need some information from our assessor through the township, and so I've got a meeting set up with Kim Feigley next week to develop the report that EnviroAssist needs, so that we can bring those together. EnviroAssist says they'll need about six weeks to do their analysis, and we're hoping that they can come to the January meeting to make a formal presentation and give us their report on that, that project. The 144 South Street issue will be, we'll have a court hearing on December 12, that was postponed from this week. Also, I've had the chance to meet with our engineers from Row, and also, before his departure, John Lyons and I had a roundtable discussion with the folks from Row regarding the septic and sewer issue, and I've had a number of meetings with state and congressional leaders on that particular topic. I've got meetings set up with county officials next month to just investigate and let them know that we're interested in being at the top of the list, if there's any funding opportunities, especially in the way of grants, that come out of the national election, where President Trump has indicated that he's planning on investing in lots of infrastructure, and if that's the case, we'll find out how much money will be allocated for infrastructure needs, and whether or not anything in the realm of providing funding for a wastewater treatment plant could be part of the opportunities for us as we move forward in that realm.
So that we'd be funding of, in the tune of $20 million, we'd be able to get?
Well, we've got our fingers crossed. You never know unless you ask, so I'm asking, and I'm making sure that our representatives know of our issues, our needs and concerns, and whether or not funding might be available for that type of project. So it's all in the discussion stage right now, until those new officials take office next month or in January, you know, we'll just have to wait and see. But I know personally of developers that were seeking some of the stimulus monies back in 2009, before President Obama had even taken office, just because there was the discussion of investing in shovel-ready projects. Of course, it turned out there wasn't very many shovel-ready projects available, but we have something that's really on paper at this point, that can be expanded, depending on what type of monies might be available for grant opportunities down the road. be available for grant opportunities down the road.
So I just wanted to- Historically, and I've heard, I've had people that talk to me about sewers. We all know how, how big of a topic that was not too long ago. And, um, uh, I, I do know that there are residents out there that, that are concerned that we're reopening sewers all over again after the community voted. So it's important that when we talk sewers, you're talking about funding, significant funding, because that's what they voted down was the significant cost of a sewer program, um, as it relates to the burden on each one of our residents. So, um, it's important that we understand what we mean when we're talking, uh, sewers all over again, as to what it was described to me.
I appreciate that comment, trustee Eschman, and, uh, I have, uh, heard that similar feedback from many, many folks, uh, in the short time that I've been here in Ortonville. And my, uh, my desire is to try to build a regional, uh, approach to a septic or to a sewer system and, uh, and combine that with, uh, subsidies from either the federal or state level to make it more palatable, whatever that final number might be. So until we, you know, find out if there's funding opportunities available and we have, uh, some coordination between the township and the school district and the M fifteen corridor, until all those come together and realistically, I, I think we're looking at something that's two years down the pike before we'd even have something, uh, you know, that would be presented to this council for your deliberation. But I just wanted to let you know that, uh, you know, I've made the initial contacts and people are aware of my desire to try to build a regional approach to this issue. Because that, realistically, from a financial standpoint, that's the only way we'll probably get the necessary funding that we would need to have to take care of something that's in the twenty million dollar price range.
I have a question. Um, so I'm gathering from what you're saying, then you're talking about getting a significant amount of grant money, um, to fund the sewers, but it sounds like it's, there's probably going to still have to be special assessment levies included in, you know, to pay for the sewers?
Potentially.
Potentially, but not necessarily. I don't know.
Until we find out the, the details down the road, that's, that's an unknown part of the equation.
Okay, okay. That's it. That was my only question about special assessment levies.
Moving on to the subject of roads, I wanted to let the, uh, the council know that, uh, one of the goals that, uh, I have set out is to try to develop a, uh, ten-year road maintenance plan with our DPW supervisor. We hope to have that to you sometime in the spring. And also, you're well aware of the Cedar Street project that, uh, was completed this past year with the scrap tire grant. Uh, that grant is available again for next year. The initial application deadline to show interest is December ninth and would require an investment of five hundred dollars to our engineer, uh, where they would do the calculations on what the cost would be for that project. Uh, I have asked them to, uh, to do that, and, uh, what I would like to try to accomplish is completing the rest of Cedar Street from where it was, uh, completed this past summer, or actually the fall, and then also do Schoolhouse because it's right next door to it. I figure it's a good way to get the best bang for our buck with the crew being there, uh, completing Cedar and then just do Schoolhouse. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a good amenity for the community because of all the traffic around the Ball Diamonds and the Senior Center. So I think it could be a win-win situation if we tackle both of those streets for this next year.
And again, that's five hundred dollars, just to have the engineers look at the feasibility?
Right, and calculate the cost for, because part of the initial application or letter of interest is you have to indicate how much money you're planning on asking for. And the only way they can calculate that is to actually do the analysis of what, what's a projected cost to, to do that.
We can't use the cost per, the total cost divided by the length of the current road that we, you know, come up with a cost per, cost per lineal foot and just do the math ourselves?
Well, uh-
Or do we have to do some other ditching and-
Yeah, there, there's other, uh, work that's involved with that. And did I-
Curbing work or whatever.
Right. Uh, there's, uh, sidewalks that are impacted, driveways, uh, so they, they've calculated what the, those costs are for each, each road, yeah.
We do have some, kind of a funky little sidewalk route along Cedar Street from, from Mill Street to Ball Street.
And so they, they've calculated some very preliminary costs to, to do each of those sections of road. But, uh, until it actually goes out for bid, you know, we don't know what the actual cost would be, but, you know, these are preliminary costs. And then, uh, if we, uh, if the, uh, state or transportation gives us approval, we can actually submit a specific application for, for the grant next year.
How much that grant cover last year for Cedar Street was it?
About seventy-five thousand dollars.
Dave, while you're on topic of roads, um, and I know you're, you're fairly new, Mill Street up the hill, halfway up the hill, way up in front of my houses, the road is virtually just crumbling apart. There was a significant patchwork done over the summer, and yet there's continued asphalt, uh, just basically pulling away and, and crumbling. Uh, that is a very high, what I'll call, major street. Um, I know we're talking about side streets here, but I, I strongly recommend you looking at Mill Street, uh, halfway up the hill where it's, it's just literally crumbling apart up there. And, and if you haven't looked at it, then I suggest you should go take a look at it.
Now, is there some tie-in to the scrap tire grant to be a, uh, non-major street, do you know?
I would have to check into that. I don't know.
And if that's a grant situation, uh, we could probably move, to your point, we could probably move some other funds to cover the Mill Street project. We could actually look at perhaps doing multiple projects.
Problem with Mill Street, though, it was much more than just paving, though. It was some serious infrastructure needed to be done underneath the road to, to-
Fix it.
Deal with the water issue, right?
And the search is going to say you can't put the money into it until that's fixed because it's gonna keep doing it.
Yeah, so that's a large investment. I remember John talking about, I don't know what the numbers were, but they were talking about a very large investment.
Like half a million dollars?
Yeah, some large number.
And I thought, a while back ago, we did, excuse me, approve of somewhere in a tune of two thousand dollars for some bore sampling to be done to try to identify where those water sources are. And I, I'm not sure that we even received the results from that.
They said there was nothing they could do and they withdrew their option to help and said they could not handle that.
So there was no sampling done?
But yet-
They did, and they said there was nothing, that it was such a big project, they could not, they weren't capable of handling it. Thank you.
But yet, the water problem was, appears to be somewhat abated over the last six months, doesn't it?
Uh, so far. We're not sure why, though.
Well, because they've got a, they've got a flush and a back flush system working.
Was that the biggest issue, the drain plug?
They've got a, a straining sock that they're, it's almost like a strainer that you put on the, the exhaust hose into your laundry tub from your washing machine. You got that type of a strainer sock, and then they're going back and forth, uh, reversing that plugging factor, and it seems to be working.
I guess I don't know the details on what they've done to help alleviate that.
That are DPW doing that?
Yeah.
With-
Fortunately, they're, they're hiring a, a firm that puts a jet into that and cleans out the straining sock from two different directions. And it's, it appears to be working.
So that would be under the road drain or alongside the-
Under the road.
Under the road.
Both.
And they're doing it that on about a quarterly basis?
It's my understanding.
What's the fee for that?
I have no idea.
I mean, we haven't seen it in our disbursements, like to recognize something like that.
I don't know. We could ask, uh-
I'll be checking with Bob. You know, Bob gave me a tour of that area and kinda described some of the, uh, activity that went on to try to resolve the problem or alleviate the problem. And I, you know, it's a, it's an ongoing work in progress because of the nature of the underground water issue that I think's gonna require some monitoring. And this winter season will be, uh, the key as to whether or not, you know, we have, um, icing issues that I've heard has been the norm in the past. And we'll see if, um, you know, we've been able to make an impact in that area.
But even beyond that, if you go, if you were to start your project, let's say, at or near the entrance to Crescent Hill, and then go all the way to the village line, that hunk of, of Mill Street is absolutely terrible.
Yeah.
It's horrific. And also, at the bottom of the hill, it's horrific. So in between, it's not all that bad. And we can take our funds and do a, two short parts of that street. Because at the bottom of the hill, I'm not so sure that the water issue is a factor.
Yeah, I would think it would be.
Because you got it draining, you got the water draining into that drain, and then it comes, and it goes south ninety degrees between the brown wooden house.
But you come down the hill, and you have to go back up a little bit, so you have that little well right there. And that little well right there is where all the roads all, that's, that's water.
Yeah, to my knowledge-
But at the top of the hill, that's not a factor.
Correct. That's probably just bad application.
So I mean, the point is, is that, the point is, you don't have to do an entire street from one end to the other. That's my point. We saw that, we saw that on Church Street where, where John just took a four-foot wide section of, along the shoulder and did a piece that was like two hundred feet long. And it helped immeasurably on Church Street to the, to the north end of it.
But I believe the road work that was done on Mill Street going up the hill stopped just prior to my driveway. And where that stopped, going further up the hill, the road is just deteriorating. And I don't know if there's water coming out. I've never seen water come out of the road there, but the road is just falling apart there.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, can one just stop, if you're concerned about the, the actual water issue in that actual specific location where the stones are in the right of way, then leave that alone. You can go up the hill and keep going all the way to the, all the way to the village line, and, and that definitely needs it badly.
I just wanted to comment when you're on-
No, those are, those are good comments. Thank you, Dan.
I appreciate the feedback. On the, uh, subject of, uh, trails, uh, again, working with Row, uh, there's, uh, grant opportunities again for the Iron Bell. It's my understanding that, uh, we haven't been able to, uh, uh, receive any grant monies for that project. And, uh, part of it's tied in with trying to interface with our friends from the township on, uh, figuring out where they want, uh, trails to be, uh, located within their area. But, uh, you know, we'll continue to have the discussion with those folks. And, uh, there's grant opportunities again that we can apply for, uh, at the beginning of next year. And I'll, uh, update, update the council at our next meeting on those opportunities.
And then one, one question to that. Have they finalized a route yet?
Probably not. I think that's part of the dilemma, but we're-
They've actually denied all four projected routes.
They were denied?
Based on the residents coming in, feedback, and, and then the tour of the properties and-
Nobody wants it in their backyard.
But with that, you know, we'll, we'll look at what opportunities exist for providing walkability and trails within our own village boundaries at, at this juncture and, uh, try to develop them in such a way that, you know, if the township ever moves forward and tries to take advantage of grant monies, that they could connect in with us. And, you know, John, John Lyons, uh, you know, that was one of his pet projects, and he, you know, laid out a very discreet plan on how to accomplish that within the, the boundaries of the village. And if that has not been shared with you folks in the past, and especially with two new council members coming on board, uh, that would be a good topic for us to include in, uh, next month's board package or the one in January when we talk about trails. Ben, I provided a letter to you for your-
Excuse me. I, I have a question that I could segue a little bit off of, uh, walkability. Uh, it's, it's nice that you've been proactive with the ten-year plan for the road maintenance. Had you given any thought yet to developing a ten-year plan for future sidewalk development? Areas that don't have any sidewalks at all? Uh, because I think that there have been some pretty patient people in our community that have waited for many years for sidewalk development, uh, down several roads that are not major roads, but yet some of them that are major roads. Uh, and one of the things that I would like to see individually, perhaps anybody else could, could jump in on this, would be to have some kind of a plan where each year we could bite off so many sections of, of development of sidewalk.
Well, to that point, Mr. President, if my, if my understanding is correct from, uh, information that Mr. Lyons shared with me before his departure, was that, uh, this council has, uh, made a decision, uh, as far as this year's budget, to allocate a substantial amount of funds towards sidewalks, forty thousand dollars to be specific. And I think, uh, the direction of the council was that that was, uh, intended to be, uh, an intermediate goal, if you will, where there were going to be tens of thousands of dollars put into next year's budget and the year after as well, too. And so, to that point, uh, I alluded to it slightly in my report, is that I've asked, uh, our friends from Row Engineering to try to get creative with grant opportunities, uh, tying it in with trails and walkability to see if we can augment the forty thousand dollars that's in this year's budget and try to tie it in with subsidizing or augmenting, uh, that investment in sidewalks and try to connect it in with walkability and trails. And that's, you know, something that's just, we've had the initial discussion and we don't have any feedback at this point. But, but when you talk about a ten-year plan, Mr. President, uh, that's something I'm certainly willing to, you know, take under, uh, task here and-
Yeah, the Iron Barrel-
Work on that type of plan.
Sounds like to me the Iron Bell Trail may not happen for two or three decades, who knows? And, but in the meantime, we have a rightful concern, uh, on the part of a lot of our citizens that they like to have some safety, uh, issues where they could walk, their kids could walk and ride their bikes. I'd like to see a priority set up of, uh, short, medium, long-term. And whatever amount the council wants to put into it each fiscal year, then we'll do it. Bite off a little bit each, each year. That's my only comment.
And going back to roads for just a moment, uh, this discussion jogged my memory. I found out this afternoon that, uh, Oakland County Road Commission has designated Oakwood between Lees and Baldwin to be a major project for next year. And then in two thousand eighteen, the remainder of Oakwood from Lees to M fifteen, uh, they've found monies to be able to do that project the year after. So I know one of the things that, uh, John Lyons had been working on was trying to do a, a shoulder project on Oakwood. Uh, we may have to wait till two thousand eighteen to try to coordinate that where we might get a better bang for our buck and maybe, uh, have less cost on our budget if we tackle that project in eighteen since it's been identified as a future project. I just found that out this afternoon.
Thank you.
I have a comment going along that route, I guess. Um, one of the large concerns for the shoulder project was getting access to, uh, the shopping center by Bekey's there, um, because there is no other access to that besides either M fifteen or Oakwood. So that was a large driving factor of the shoulder project was, was to help with access to that. But we have our piece of property that we had purchased for the sewer plant. So we have, there's that piece of property, and then between that piece of property and Bekey's, there is one piece of property that, that, that back end of their property, I don't know how useful that is and, and how much they'd be willing to sell a small portion of that piece of property for. If you're willing to need, like- of property for, because we only need like 12 feet of it. And then put a trail, a walking path trail, if you will, you know, 10 feet wide or something between, along the, along our property line, our property, and then through their property, essentially, which would become our property, so that we have access to the shopping center at Beakies from our town as opposed to having to go down Oakwood.
So you're talking about down Naren Street to the end of Naren, across the vacant property, and then staying on the west side of the creek and not crossing the creek?
Correct, correct.
Not having to build a bridge?
Correct, no bridge.
And when we talked about that, I know the only concern is the wet, how wet it is, and how much we'd have to build up and what we'd have to put into it.
Sure, you may need to, you may need to put in some small bridge-like structure, I guess if you will, through that, there's like a, it's a bit of a low area, the property that's behind our village's property, between us and Beakies, it's a low area, so you might need to put in something that's elevated, but again, it's not $100,000 bridge. You can do it very cost-effectively. So I guess I, I would really like to see us at least investigate that route and to see if those people would be interested in selling some small piece of their property in the back, and to see what it would take to put in that path, because that path, to me, seems like a whole lot better than staying on the shoulder. I saw two kids the other day riding their bikes along the side of Oakwood, and even if there was a six-foot shoulder there, it's still dangerous.
That's got some merit to it.
And I know we've discussed that route, has anybody actually talked to them about it?
Probably not.
Because I know John's brought it up many times about using that, Naren, but I don't know if we've actually talked to them.
Too busy being preoccupied changing horses in the middle of the stream.
A good way to put it. But I'd be happy to initiate that dialogue if the council would like that to be investigated.
Yeah, I guess I would...
To see if it's even in action.
Yeah, to see if they'd be willing to sell a piece of their property, and if they would be, then, I don't know if it's, if it's $500 to Row to figure out, okay, here's what we're looking at doing, what does it cost to do this type of project? And then, once, once we know how much it costs, then figure out, you know, do we have the money for it, or is there a grant or something else?
Feasibility analysis.
Yeah, we can write a grant.
You know, and again, even the folks who own the Beakies complex, you know, would they be willing to fund part of that because it helps with access, you know, community and improvement kind of a thing?
Yeah, Groveland Township also has a piece of the action there that we have to contend with as well.
Sure.
Yeah, we can explore that. Then the last item I wanted to apprise the council of was that, you'll recall, last month, we had our audit presentation from Abraham and Gaffney. There was a management letter that we received that required some corrective action plans to be developed. I've included a copy of the letter I submitted to the state for your review, and as a result of that, one of the, several of the requirements are that the village adopt some new policies and procedures, and I'll be submitting some of those for your review over the next couple of months. So that concludes my report, Mr. President. It's been a very interesting first month on the job, and every day's a new adventure.
So then, at this, at this point, you're not planning to elaborate on item B and C?
Well, actually, I'll take this opportunity to segue to that. For, especially for the benefit of our new council members, we provided copies of the proposed rules and procedures for the village council, as well as the purchasing and contracting policies. I'd like to encourage all the members now, over the next couple of weeks, to review those documents and provide some feedback. We've had some initial feedback from one or two folks on the proposed rules and procedures, but again, for, you know, the new folks and collectively, especially with me coming on board as the new village manager, we want to get our arms around these documents and tweak them, get them to the level that we want to be in a position to adopt them formally in the next month or two. And with that, I'll yield the floor to you, Mr. President.
So I guess what I think would be appropriate, since we do have a, only a short window of time between this meeting and our next meeting, which is set for December 12. It would be a good opportunity if we could take some time and review this proposed rules and procedures. Jot down questions, comments, submit them to the village manager. If you have questions, concerns, a lot of these items are restatements and clarifications of general village law that are found in extremely small print in large binders in our office that are not readily accessible. Oh, yeah, yeah. So you'll see some of these things that are very familiar, and then you'll see some updating items, such as being able to entertain perhaps the idea of having a vote without a member being present by electronic means, with good reason, naturally. We ran into some issues this summer with trying to make quorum to people on vacation, et cetera, and which delayed some of our actions. So, you know, using electronic devices and so on and so forth in this day and age is being embraced by certain municipalities. So maybe something that we want to consider as well. Same thing with purchasing and contracting policy procedure. If you've not read, read this, I think that perhaps we might be able to take action on this in December, on the purchasing one. So if you would, council members, please review both of those when you're not shopping online for Christmas, I mean, shopping small in your local businesses. Okay? Any other items to bring before council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then. Well, I guess I made it. I moved to adjourn.
The DDA bylaws were just informational.
I have a motion to adjourn by, well, supported by Councilman Dialis. All those in favor, please say aye. Meeting is adjourned.